Yeah, I need to send. Are you connected to the meeting room or the LFTW? So I need to send it to your.
He put on six days. He's out of the room beyond the. And I actually wear the coats on.
It's in the pound. Once you guys have it.
Now it's the same now.
Somewhere in this building and some was another. I might have been here.
Like the quote of order, the advertised and stated monthly meeting, October eleventh, twenty twenty two of the lower Marlin Township Board of Commissioners, please rise. A public participation on agenda is we take as each item is discussed and will have the public participation for non-agenda items at the end. Under eternal affairs, review and consider minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty two. Any of the commissioners have any comments or corrections? In hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty two. It's in motion and second to approve the minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty two. All those in favor placing a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have them. Under item B, review and consider October twenty twenty two bill list. Any of the commissioners have any comments? Any questions from the public? It's for October twenty twenty two bill list. Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October twenty twenty two bill list. Has been motioned in the second to approve the October twenty twenty two bill list. All those in favor placing a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I started thinking. Review and consider appointment of township auditor. Manager Hoppin, could you describe that process, please?
Yes. So I guess there's two things to update the board on tonight. So the standard item for every October meeting is that the board must appoint the auditor for our current twenty twenty two year by the end of October for that project to be completed in the following year. But then this year, we also saw proposals from auditing firms because our best kind of standard practice is to solicit five-year proposals. And we had just completed the prior five-year proposal with B Bird Ball. So EJ had coordinated and put together the proposal. The we received, I think, three responses out of, I think, the nine that were sent out. So those results are summarized in your packet. And ultimately, the recommendation is to appoint B Bird Ball, who has been the township's auditor, based off of their five-year proposal submitted for an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars. The other two proposals received were about ten thousand dollars more annually for the same service. So the specific item for the board's consideration is resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-six, which would appoint B Bird Ball as the township auditor for twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Manager Hoppin. I know how it worked out as being the lowest, but I'm sure you're very pleased. It's just the same, correct? Any comments from commissioners? Any questions from the public for the appointment, the order? In hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-six, appointing B Birdball and company as the township auditor for twenty twenty two, further five-year proposal. There's been motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-six. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you. Under item D, review and consider P A Act twenty twenty-two dash fifty-seven resolution. Manager Hoppin, could you describe why it's necessary for our board to also make this resolution if the state has made Act fifty-seven? So I am actually going to pump this to solicitor. Very good.
It's pretty straightforward. The state passed an Act twenty twenty-two fifty-seven, which requires municipalities to adopt a resolution by the end of the year, which would require the tax collector to waive additional, the elected tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes in the current year, subject to some conditions, situations where the tax bill hasn't been issued, the property owner hasn't received it. And there might be penalties and interest applied under the current law. The tax collector's hands are tied and had to escape the additional penalties and charges. So this, the tax collector in Lower Marlin understands this, and she's she's on on board with this. So you're basically have have a situation provided the landowner can show that they didn't get the bill for whatever reason, or it was lost, or it was a new new settlement, additional charges, interest fees, penalties, and anything accruing beyond the face amount of the tax. Tax collector has to waive that. So that's what the ordinance does. This board has to adopt it and basically direct the tax collector to do that so she can do it legally under the existing law.
Great. Any questions from the board about that act?
Does the tax collector have to give you a list of who they're waiving and why? Does she have to give anybody on this?
Well, that's that is not in the act, but it's probably precluded. There's something called the taxpayer bill rights, which prevents elected tax collector from giving out personal information in certain circumstances. But there's nothing that addresses that in the act or in this resolution. I don't know whether she would do that or whether she could do that if somebody made some kind of a written class.
I try to start a current. All of a sudden, fees and penalties.
Well, it she's gonna have to. I mean, right now that can't be done, but whoever the tax collector is, is gonna have to follow the criteria in the in the resolution. There's some requirements for the property owner to meet before that's done.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public about the Act fifty-seven? Okay, hearing none, then I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-seven as described.
Second.
Is the motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-seven and describe all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have. Thank you. Under item B, administration board manager Hoppin.
Sure. So just two specific items to report on tonight. So the first is that I am making significant progress through our twenty twenty-three proposed budget. So we are on track to distribute the budget book to the board by Friday of next week to then begin our budget sessions with the first one being Tuesday, October twenty-fifth at five P M. Here in this room. And then just the other item was wanted to report back on the conditional use adjudication that was approved by the board last month in relation to the school district expanding the usage at their bus garage to allow for private charters. So I did receive a call today from Mark McWinn, the business manager for the school district, asking to set up a call with Tim Woodrow and me to discuss the condition related to the stormwater runoff. Think there may have been inaccurate perception that they were going to add hundreds of thousands of dollars of cost to implementing a stormwater plan, despite the solicitor's best efforts with the district solicitor in the room to describe kind of the de minimis nature of what we're looking to do. So I was able to hopefully set that right, and then we will do this meeting with district staff to be able to settle on what is agreeable from our perspective to meet that condition. That's all I have for this evening unless there are any additional questions.
Any questions for the manager? Is our assistant manager a little bit out of the weather down the hall? Is she available to speak? Assistant manager Lee?
Hi, I I am available. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sure I can give a quick update. Outside of the auditor R P, the twenty twenty-three budget is what has been the primary focus. I mean, the twenty twenty-three budget, sorry, has been the primary focus the last several weeks in helping assist a system the township manager and helping getting that sorted out. There are two grants that we submitted for reimbursement, the Monco twenty forty grant for the Lower Welsh sidewalk. That was submitted back in July and we actually, we have reimbursed for that last week. So that grant is now officially closed now. And then the D P nine oh two grant for the compost site, we had submitted a grant for that for three hundred ten thousand dollars. And we finally got the executed agreements two weeks ago. We submitted for reimbursement for that since all of that was already expensed last year, and hopefully we can get that reimbursed before the end of the year. And the other items are more community event related, and I will defer to Commissioner Kurtz when it's her turn on the agenda. But if anyone has any questions, I'm available to answer.
Thank you, Assistant Manager Lee. Any questions for the Assistant Manager? Okay. Under item F, the tax collectors' report. Unfortunately, our tax collector is under the weather tonight, but does the commissioners have any questions about the tax collective report? In hearing none, I'd like to request that the tax collector's report be accepted as submitted. That comes to item G, my liaison reports. The civil service commission has not met since the last meeting, but I do attend the school board directors' meetings virtually. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Kurtz, Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. First item on my agenda is review and consider escrow release. It's M and B Associates, fourteen thirty, County Line Road. It's number twenty-one oh two, and we are all in receipt of a letter from our engineer, Tim Woodrow, that he prepared recommending escrow release number one. The total escrow for the project is a hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. The escrow release number one is for a hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which will leave a balance of forty-five thousand and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. Tim, you're really good down there. You got a lot of work.
He sure did.
Paving.
A lot of stormwater management.
A stormwater basin. Everything a lot of work. So you're recommending that we release escrow. Does anyone from our board have any questions? And if you haven't, take a ride down County Line Road. It looks really nice. Does anyone from the public have any questions regarding this? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the escrow release in number one, in the hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Certainly. It has been motioned and second to approve the escrow release as described. All those in favor placing a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you.
Next item is the building officials' report. So we had seventy-nine total permits that were issued for September, sixty-five residential, fourteen. Little bit edgy. Both bobs have been active, actively involved with visiting residents under the complaint and violation notice. We had about forty-five of those. And what happens is they take calls, they go out on site. It's not just one business. It's a lot of events. And if there's something is not in compliance, they'll give a notice and so many days to comply. So we have a comprehensive list here and under our use and occupancy certificates for September, we had no business U N Os, we had no residential. We had eleven construction, use and occupancy certificates. So does the board have any questions? You know, any matters are coming up in the board.
What time is the trash collection to start?
I believe that we had modified the most recent contract to pair with our noise ordinance, which is seven A M. There is a, I think, bold outstanding regulation in the trash ordinance, but the contract says so.
Because they definitely come before seven.
And is that our hauler or the private haulers for commercial buildings?
Oh, no, I don't. I don't know about the other ones, so.
Okay, it's a republic. So we'll follow up with our content there to let them know they need to abide by the starting.
Thank you.
Excellent question, manager. So you just mentioned that disparity. Is that something we need to fix down the road?
Yeah, so my thought was to do that when we do the next term contract, but because the language is specifically in the contract with Republic, I'm not particularly worried about.
Great. Thank you for clarifying.
Are there any questions from the public? Does anyone have any matters? Stop piling the wood or anything happening code issues that you'd like to ask the board or our enforcement service thing about? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none, I will accept all of Bob Shadick's reports as submitted. The next item on my agenda is the is my liaison report, my liaison positions on planning commission, community events, and now the newly Lower Marlin Township School District's D E I committee. Regarding the D E I, I'll be attending the first meeting next week, November seventeenth. Just to note, I'm a some of our board members now that I served over a decade with Dr. Beal at the district for the original point to their city committee. With regard to the planning commission, there is no meeting expected to take place for October. To date, under community events, the Heinz by Fire Prevention Day, a lower Marlin Township open house, was held this past Saturday, October eighth. It was a success, and our company had an amazing day, and so did we. I'd like to thank Leah Simmons, our assistant, and E J, and the fire company for allowing us to partner with them. We had a giveaway bag of environmental safety information and all different kinds of goodies. So if anyone wants one of those bags, they can contact the township and pick one up.
There's about thirty-five thousand of them.
We stopped a lot of them. Yes, and we also had pumpkins, and kids love them every year. Pumpkin decorating. So that was really nice. Our next event is the movie United at the Heinz by Library, which is going to take place this Saturday, October fifteenth at seven P M. In the parking lot. The movie is Bad Guys. So it's recommended to bring blankets and a lawn chair because it might get chilly. We're gonna have a giant twenty-five foot screen, T V, your screen, and lighter refreshments will be provided. The rain location will be at the Red Line Gym. After that, moving to the end of October, is our trunk or treat. So we've been gearing up for that. It's a trunk, drive-through trunk or treat at the Buffalo Works Complex on Eaton Road in Knights Valley. The time is six to eight thirty P M. And that is October twenty-second with a rainy day of October twenty-ninth, or both Saturdays. We will also be accepting food donations for bill abundance at this event. We did that at our previous event. It was a big hit. And final is our our township will be having a fall Halloween decorating decoration tour. So if your home is decorated or you would like to decorate it and jump on board with sharing your beautiful home that looks like a fall masterpiece with us, send your photos in and your location, and we can add that to the township tournament. And our website has additional information.
Is that a contest still? What are the what are the categories? Same as last year?
Same as last year, the categories are same initiatives. So that'll that'll be on our website if it's not yet. And it was like front porch, best home overall. There's a few categories. Everyone had a lot of fun with that. Then just on a final, finally, just to update our board with regard to the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board of Montgomery County. I don't know if all of you know that we've been working on that for a pretty long time, trying to have Lower Marlin, you know, be, you know, have a presence on their site. So that's been probably a five-year project, and we are finally on their site. So take a look at that. We had the Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board, we're representing. If she came, she made a presentation to us at our meeting, and we also had two other meetings. We have two other meetings for businesses in the community. There are some businesses there, so businesses are listed, different activities and different things like that. So I was thrilled. I had gotten in sweet. So that concludes my agenda for tonight. We chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurtz. Chair now recognizes Commissioner Oger, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you. The first item I have is review non-discrimination ordinance. Last month, the board voted to table the formal ordinance consideration and to include additional discussion on the October agenda. Between the September and October meetings, Solicitor Rice was tasked with learning more about guidance from the Attorney General and Consigliere Human Relations Commission, as the majority of board members indicated this information would be helpful to inform how to proceed. The board commissioners held an executive session via Zoom on Friday, September thirtieth, for Solicitor Rice to provide his update. And I'll now turn it over to Solicitor Rice to summarize for the public session.
Thank you, Commissioner Oger. I've been fighting a little bit of a cough, so like, pop the ball drop in my mouth. So I can describe what both I and Chris Hoffman have done since the last meeting, but a little bit of background and history on this ordinance. The the ordinance was initiated by Commissioner Howson. The thought at the time was that there was no remedy for anyone that would be treated unfairly because of gender. Existing state law had in place. There's a state act, and there's a state human relations commission that takes complaints. But there was been some confusion over whether or not they would take complaints regarding gender, L G B T Q primarily. So that's how we started this process, was to provide a local ordinance and include that along with the other categories that are in the state act, which are, you know, the categories are race, color, age, religious creed, ancestry, sex, national origin, handicap. That had the L G B T Q, so there would be something at the local level. So and and we reached out, Chris Hoffman and I reached out, we both spoke to the contact person, the PHRC, back in January or February. And there were some things that we weren't made aware of at the time. So the ordinance, which had been advertised, was unlike the other ordinances that had been adopted mainly in Montgomery County. It didn't create an H R C, a Human Relations Commission. It created a mediation type of a service, but it still required the appointment of someone to do an investigation. And there was some concern about, you know, an investigation at a local level involving resident versus church, school, business, et cetera. So and the concern was what's the best remedy? There's a lot of different remedies you know, available. So I spoke to the Attorney General, the head of Civil Enforcement Division, Mr. Anderson, and he advised me, and this this is just in the last month, that they are accepting complaints and that they are considering any kind of L G B T Q complaint of unfairness as a sex discrimination complaint, as is now the P H R C. So you've got those those two state agencies that have experience. They have investigators, and you know, they're used to handling these types of matter. So I'm reporting tonight to the. Um, so I'm reporting tonight to the public and the board that there is this alternative remedy. Um, however, um, I don't think there's anybody up here that. On this board that wants to see anyone treated unfairly in this community. You know, because of some personal characteristic. And um, there's been, you know, a desire to have some kind of an ordinance. Um, or a resolution. Township currently has no. Policy regarding non-discrimination based on personal characteristics. There's nothing, either a resolution or an ordinance. And uh, so the question tonight for the board is to how to, how to move this forward, how to address this. So that um. Hopefully, some of the items are addressed on a local basis, but we're not creating. And this is my concern as a lawyer, litigation, that the township gets, could get pulled into. Um, if there's some penalties involved at a local level. And looking at the state agencies that have the experience and have told us. You know, they're, they're now accepting complaints and they will go through the process. They've always accepted complaints regarding everything other than uh LGBTQ complaints, but they're now accepting that also. So, so you have a remedy. It's just a question of how do people get to that remedy? Um, if it's in this particular community. Uh, I know a lot of townships have adopted different. Variations of this ordinance. Some have a lot of penalties. Most of the larger cities have a very developed infrastructure. They handle complaints and they do their own investigations. They get funding um from the federal government. Um, Lowermoreland's, you know, small community. And um, so that's, that's sort of the discussion, the struggle, you know. What's the township do to address things that are unfair in the community and things that are unfair in every community? Uh, in this area. So um. And the other thing that's happened in the law recently is the US Supreme Court, there's a case called Bostock. Which found that um gender discrimination is the same basically as sex discrimination. So. When I talked to Mr. Anderson. At the, the Civil Rights Division of the Attorney General's office, he says that based on that. They're very comfortable that, you know, that's the definition now of sex discrimination, which is already on the books. Now, you know, some people will agree. I have some people already nodding their heads that, you know. That may not be the best way to do it, but this board's got to make some kind of legislative decision for all residents. So um, and I think there's, you know, there's two. Uh, similar possibilities here. One is to adopt a resolution which would establish a non-discrimination policy. Um, with um, you know, no involvement in terms of investigating at the local level. The other one is to establish an ordinance which would do that also. And uh would not provide for an investigation, but would provide a referral. If it's a complaint that would come in. Someone has a, an issue, would come into the administration, township manager and I. Could look at those and then uh provide the options for someone that has a legitimate complaint. And, you know, that is, that can be dealt by ordinance. Uh, that is likely what would have hap- would happen with the mediator. There's. Two or three options if you have some kind of an ordinance in the court. One is goes to the PHRC. It, it may go to the Attorney General's office depending on their rules and regulations, but they're accepting complaints. Uh, or an individual could go into Montgomery County Court, hire their own legal counsel and pursue the complaint. Um, I would guess most things at the local level would get read down and resolved informally. That can be done through the township manager's office and through my involvement. Uh, we're used to dealing with personnel issues in this town. Um, you know, but that puts us in sort of a neutral position and not taking a side, one way or the other. But that can be done by ordinance, sets a policy, sets a procedure up and it provides a remedy at the local level. Someone that doesn't want to go to the state. Uh, it's a small step. But it's information and I think most people don't have that information or know that information. We have it. We know that there's these other options that um that are available. Um, and so, so that, maybe from my point of view, of course, you know, I don't get to vote. Um, there's only six people that get to vote on these things, but. You, I think you have those two options in, or you could re-advertise the existing, you know, ordinance that was drafted. And was discussed and tabled definitely at the last minute. So um, I think there are the, you know, the issues in front of you. Um, you certainly can establish that, that, that policy either by resolution or by ordinance. And to insert township administration into um, you know. Meeting with people or trying to resolve complaints informally, that could be part of the ordinance. So you have a step. It's not a punitive step, not an investigation step. It's not a complaint being filed by one person against somebody else. Uh, but it's a step that then. You know, can be referred on to the appropriate agency that has the. You know, the ability to, to look into it more seriously. Um, so, I mean, the other thing I'll, I'll say, and I've been doing this for thirty-five years in townships. At the local level usually aren't good on these kinds of things anyway. They're good paving roads, plowing snow. Doing stuff like that, but on these types of matters. Um, I mean. I think the township staff can be a clearinghouse for information, but actually doing investigation and pursue remedy at a local level. Um, townships just aren't that good at. They're, they're not. I'll tell you, you know. Been doing this for a long time and this is a, I mean, there's about. Sixty or seventy municipalities that have adopted this ordinance. Seventy-three in the state and there's two thousand five hundred and sixty municipalities in the state. So that's about a little bit less than three percent. So it's, it's in most areas and I, I've been looking at this for ten years for different municipalities. Large municipalities in other counties, small municipalities that have brought it up. And uh. Um, most of it, the ordinances are in more urbanized areas where more businesses, more schools, more activities. And there's more problems in this area. So that's, that's my report to the public and to the board. And um certainly I can answer any questions if anybody, anybody on the board has any questions.
Okay, thank you, Solicitor. Any questions or comments first by the board?
Yep. First of all, I have to say that I found that the most lanted. View of this ordinance I have ever heard. And I think as a solicitor, it's going out to lay up the gun not to give your opinion. And that's all you did tonight was give your opinion. I have never treated you as disrespectfully as I am right now because I am the worst. This ordinance is meant to make everyone feel equal. So one of the reasons that I'm so passionate about, and I shared this with Commissioner Oger. But not with the rest of you and perhaps I should have. But when I was growing up, when we moved into our new house. They, the first thing we were told was, oh, there's a petition to keep you out of this neighborhood because your father's a rapper. The next thing that happened was the first Yom Pivor, which we just had the other day. Our house was robbed. It wasn't really robbed. They took some cash. They didn't bother with anything else. But basically they took everything that was still in boxes because we'd only been there two weeks. And threw it all over the place and put swastikas all over our house. Okay, and the third thing that happened in that same year, and I'm sorry to say it happened again and again and again. Was I went home and received a bomb. What is it called? A bomb? Um, for the synagogue to our home. And then I had to, and I'm eight years old. I had to call the police. I had to call the synagogue. I had to take care of all of them. This is not an abstraction to me. This is real. This is not, oh, maybe we should, or maybe we shouldn't. The other part of this is that, well, that tells you where I'm coming from. I think it's only fair that you know that. Okay, the other part of this is that um you kept talking about an investigation. What we were going to have is a mediator that does not necessarily mean an investigation. It just means you bring the two parties together and you talk to them. It's not burdensome. It's not mean spirited. And to say that you two can do this yourselves means that you are putting our township in jeopardy. Let us have the independent external mediator. And she can manage this. And then if she can't, then they have the ability to go to local court. And our mediator may be called in as a witness, she may not, but she's prepared to do that. At least the woman that I asked if she would be interested in doing. The reason I asked her is because of her enormous experience qualifications and sense. These, there's no investigation we're, we're asking for. We're asking for a medium. You know, get two people together and then you don't have to make a. A criminal case out of it. That could protect our businesses. Right now, if you do it this way, they're gonna go federal or state right away and it's gonna be public. They're gonna have, the, the news media will get involved, the this, the that, the other. Wouldn't it be nice if there's a misunderstanding to just handle it here? Isn't that better for our business? Isn't that better for our township? I think it is. I personally think. We have passed ordinances for fireworks and for. Um, sound ordinances that are significantly more burdensome than this particular ordinance. To say that we're duplicating effort is. You could have said that with a fireworks ordinance. You could have said that with the, you know, with, with ten of the things we've done. But we did them to make sure that it got done the way we want. We did this to make sure that our people were protected and taken care of. That is our job. We are commissioners for Lowermoreland Township. I don't um care. Almost got me. I don't care what the state says and is doing. In the end, the state has no law. Protecting the LGBTQ plus and we have no law at all in Lowermoreland protecting anyone. Let's tell everyone that they count. Let's tell everyone that they matter. Um, I'm sure I had other things to say, but I, I'm a little lost. Um, I'd, I'd love to hear it from the people in, in, in the uh. Excuse me, in the room and on Zoom.
Yeah, we'll get to that. You're finished?
Yes.
Okay. Any other commissioners have comments or motions or?
I have a question also because there was a timeline, you know, just a little summary about the seven. Uh, PHRC commissioners that unanimously approved the change in the definition. Of sex to include LGBTQ plus individuals. And the rule change when it was posted on the PA bill and the dates and, and whatnot. Um, and the IRRC issued the review letter of June eighth. The Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. So advised that the response and final rule should be replaced by December twenty twenty-two.
It's just what Commissioner Ferret's is talking about. The Pennsylvania Union Relations Commission published a rule that would clarify. LGBTQ discrimination is sex discrimination. And that rule gets published administratively in something called defensively important. People then get to comment on it. Good idea, not a good idea. Um, so that comment period, I believe, is over. And they then take it back and make it a final rule and that's due to happen in December. Um, so anybody wants to write a letter uh on that. Um, I don't know whether, Chris, you looked at the, the comment period closed at this point? Yes. But that, that's what Commissioner Powers is referring to. So.
And if I may, um, that is all true. I, I didn't know about it when I first started this process. None of us did, right?
Yeah, yes, that was something that.
But that is all true and I don't care. Okay, and the reason I don't care is because this is based on what the PA Attorney General wants. We're gonna have a new attorney general in two months. What then? And by that time, it will take us another three months to get this enacted. And all of that time. None of the people who would normally be covered by this ordinance will be covered. We will still have in Lowermoreland, no one looking in for everything. And we will still have no one. To say in Lowermoreland. We are important.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
I have one more question. I have a solicitor. Solicitor, what, what, what's, what's the liability? What, what could happen to the county?
Yeah, I mean, if, if there's, if there's an attorney, say you're a mediator, um, you know, and it doesn't give a result, then. Ruth, what you want to see happen is have that person that's unhappy be able to file complaints. Please, so, you know, if that happens, we're involved, mediator's involved, records can be sustainable. Um, you know, so that's, I mean, that is, that's litigation, that's not mediation. I think the mediation function can be done with the current staff. Um, um, probably, you know, a lot of issues, but on serious issues, it's gonna end up on coming to court.
Well, I think that was brought up, Commissioner Howson, because you had the two speakers, not even the king. The one chair. Yeah, Ron brought that up. Solicitor Rice, I think, further, I just.
And Solicitor Rice, you, you gave an opinion, it's to um, about few communities. Actually have enacted these types of ordinances. Do you know how many have been brought into court because?
I don't. I didn't, I mean, I didn't say how many, you know, I think I said there were seventy. You corrected me and said there were seventy-three. And I know there's twenty-five hundred and sixty municipalities in the state, so it's a small number compared to that. Doesn't mean it's not important. It's important in the areas that have adopted it, but it's not. It's not something that most municipalities, local governments traditionally get involved with. I mean, that's just, that's just a fact and from my experience, that's what I've seen. And, you know, the board wants me to report on, you know, what we found out and. In my opinion, it's based on not just, not just pulling it out of my ear, you know, it's just based on what I've seen and I don't know. Out of the seventy municipalities, how many have ended up in Montgomery County Court? Um, or, or Park County.
I looked and looked and looked and looked. I didn't find one.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's many. We don't know how many have gone to the state or even federal court. You know, that's.
I mean, I didn't find one um municipality that has an HR seat. Because we're the only ones that's gonna have a mediator, of course, but I didn't find one municipality that had the HR seat. That's been sued because of how they handled it. Do you?
I'm not, I mean, I'm not aware of any. I'm just, you know, my opinion is, here are the risks. Let's talk about all the facts, all the possibilities. You know, lawyers are paid to be paranoid about this. What could happen or not happen? If you have something on the books, I mean.
But let's talk about what's a bigger probability? That we get sued because we enacted uh this ordinance. That we get sued because we enacted, uh, this ordinance? Or, um, that there's a new Attorney General in progress? We know there's gonna be a new Attorney General. I'm sorry. I, I, I don't mean to be rude. I just think that the way you presented it was very biased, and that's my opinion. Okay?
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Solicitor, if this, the P H, in P H R C, if the final rule in December twenty twenty-two arrives, and there's strength and teeth in it, um, where the language is changed, or, you know, it may, then the language becomes stronger at that point in time. How does that, how does it change things for us? How does it, I mean?
Well, it doesn't, I mean, it, it basically provides a, I mean, they're taking complaints now without that rule being enacted. Once that's enacted, they're gonna be uh, more confident in taking the complaints. Somebody could always raise a complaint that it's not covered under the state. This is gonna cover it under the, under the, their interpretation on the Human Relations Act, so. Uh, and the Attorney General's backing them up, so. You know, if township, we see whether a mediator or somebody just walking around the street had a complaint, you know, it could be reviewed and referred on. That would be the first step moving forward on the P H R C. Um, without mediation, without any effective investigation. And, um, you know, then they would, they have the people on the staff to investigate the issue. Uh, what it is. I mean, that's the only point I'm making throughout this. This is not something that, um, councils typically do. I'm gonna say that over and over again. I tell you a lot of things they won't do. You know, this.
Once again, Solicitor, that is your opinion.
Right.
And.
I think that's understood.
And you've said it's open.
But anyway, that, to answer Commissioner Ferret's question, it would go to the, even today, after the rule, it would go to the P H R C. And they would go through their process. They would go and investigate.
If it is already resolved in.
Correct.
And one other question is, where are timeline for saying that if we would, I, I don't know if the board wants to, but even to send, I know Senator Collette sent a letter in support of this.
Of the rule.
Of the rule, so our time, it's expired.
I think, I think the public, I mean, you.
Are we able to do that?
You can still, you can still send that to the division.
To the commission?
Uh, itself, because I think they have to still formally adopt something, adopt the rule. It'd probably have a public review, so you could still send letters of support to that commission.
Well, I don't know what the board feels about, but I would like to send. She sent a letter in support to the H R C. Um, I mean, like I said, it's not a matter of importance. Is for that, though.
I would, I would support that. I would sign with you.
We would all sign with you. That's not, well, I, I'm sure that's, that's not in question. The only thing that's in question today is what we in Lowermoreland should do.
Yeah.
That's it. Nothing else. Um, I, I'm sorry, I forgot. Somebody asked me to read their letter. Um, do you mind?
We'll get that.
Oh.
Any other work comments?
Well, we're gonna open this up to the public community. We have representatives.
So this is what we'll do. Let's, we have our distinguished representative here. We'll allow her to speak first, and then, then we're gonna go to Lowermoreland residents, Lowermoreland taxpayers next to move by one.
Thank you very much. I have not met personally. I'm an against your state representative. Uh, when I was mayor of Haverhill, um, went on to that position five or six years ago. Uh, one of the first ordinances we put out was this ordinance. This is an ordinance that I chaired with a member of your board. In those number of years, we have had zero complaints. Let me tell you what we have had. We have had dozens of new businesses come to our town and make it their home. We have had a number of builders that have put up loft apartments. We have two in process right now. We have gained more tax revenue because of this ordinance that we haven't had to raise taxes in Haverhill in a number of years, a long time. We have a church that has been done, that is, flies the, the power flag and takes care of our SAGA community on a weekly basis with meetings. Our residents and our people that come to visit in Haverhill to have a dinner, to, um, go to one of the breweries. They all feel safe, and that's what this is all about. We have children that are bullied at schools that don't have protection state. The bill has been sitting in a drawer in the state for close to thirty years, okay? And it's gonna continue to sit in that drawer. And this is why the state gave you the authority to do this at your own level. And it's the reason we did it at our level, and many municipalities that you were surrounded by have done so. I can only tell you that this has been so well done in, in, in everyone that is around us. We have had zero, zero complaints. And we have a commission of five people on there that keep going. There's nobody complaining. They feel safe. And usually, if there is a problem, a lot of times it's a misunderstanding. And that's why you don't have your solicitor or, or your township manager deal with this. You have someone that has experience in working with people, okay, because a hundred percent of the time, you can usually find a good answer at the end, okay? And you don't have to go to the Attorney General or the Pennsylvania Commission of Human Services, um, Human Rights. You complete your right to the county, because we have that commission at the county level. And they are not dealing with millions of people at the county level, okay? They're dealing with the amount of people that they can deal with. I have not heard of one case, of one, not one, that has been served in Montgomery County due to this. What you are doing is you are protecting the people that put you up there, okay? That's a real important, it's not just about trash. No, it's just, it's not just about fireworks. It's not that. The biggest thing that you are elected to do, and I know because I also serve two terms of the council person, okay? Is to protect your constituent, and that's all we're asking you to do. And I swear to God, you will not be sorry for this.
Thank you, Representative. So I would like to hear from any interested Lowermoreland residents. We'll, we'll handle it like this. Um, when you're, when you're recognized, please come up to the podium. Please give your name, your Lowermoreland address, and, uh, our manager will time you for three minutes. He'll give you a warning at two minutes and thirty seconds, just to let you know you're on target. Um, and then we'll keep things moving that way. Uh, as time allows, I know there's interest parties that are non Lowermoreland residents. I, I would like to give them an opportunity to say something briefly as well. You know, I'll give you a minute or so. All the people from outside the township would like to say something to, you know, to support your neighbors. We'll, we'll get that at the end. So is anybody from Lowermoreland willing to speak? This week, come up, give your name and address for the record.
I think you know we don't, right?
For the record, I know.
My name is, I did that way. My name is Chuck with data level twenty-four seventy-two, David. John had a conversation. We both talked to Corbin Anderson, and there are things that are not covered in the state and at the federal level. And I think what Denise Kirch is talking about is the Employment Act that's covered by the Human Relations Commission, that's gonna be covered in, in December, okay? It doesn't cover township problems, okay? And the ordinance that you presented, I think you presented this four or five months ago, John? Said, you said that June, it was a very unique ordinance because there was a mediator that was going to settle the issues in the township. And now I would rather see that, that an independent person, if one arises in this township, does the mediation instead of you or a township manager. That takes pretty much the liability away from you guys. But it can go to court if it does happen. But like Representative Gens said, most of the time, the problem is resolved with a mediator. And the examples that we were given, John, through the Chief Counsel, and, and I talked to, uh, who was it? Ryan Matthews, um, the Pennsylvania State District Human Rights Campaign. Some of the examples that we're giving is neighborly. Two neighbors are having words, and it becomes a racial incident. The police are called. The chief gets involved, reports made, but they had that opportunity to come and sit down in front of the mediator to resolve their issues. And most of the time, like Nancy said, it's a handshake and the best neighbors from the rest of their residency here in Lowermoreland. But that policy that's coming in December, that's for employment. That's not for township residents.
No, it's, they're, they're, they're creating a definition. They're redefining what sex discrimination is.
Right, what's, right.
That has nothing to do with employment. It might apply if it's a complaint.
Right.
In an employment setting, but that's, that's what that rule is doing. That, I mean, we, Chris followed up on that. Uh, that's what we published. And that's consistent with what Corbin Anderson, both of them.
Right, correct.
You know, he's looking at sex discrimination as including gender.
Gen, right. He explained everything. That's why he told me to call you. We talked about.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, so it's, you know, that remedy is gonna be there. It's fair now. It's when it's stronger.
But that might be, it doesn't cover the example that I just gave.
Either with this ordinance, two neighbors fighting.
Right.
This ordinance wouldn't cover it. It wouldn't cover bullying either, this ordinance.
That was crazy.
And so.
But it still catches on with a meeting.
We're, we're talking about what these ordinances would cover would be transactions. You're not being served because of your identity. Uh, you're not being rented an apartment because you're identity. You lost your job, and you're not being hired because of your identity. There's some, it's not school bullying. It's not two neighbors fighting because of a racial argument. Doesn't cover that, so that's why, you know, there's always gonna be a complainant, right? And there's gonna be a business or an institution or a person that is gonna have to answer the complaint in, in most of these ordinances, so. But that just, you know, we should be clear on that, because people get emotional when they hear bullying. And we've heard that at the other meetings. This doesn't cover that situation. Even though the school district would be covered on certain instances.
I'm not sure what you take, what meat you take now of this ordinance. Um, since I, I delivered it to a board rep, I, I'm not sure what changes you mean.
Well, there's no, there's never any bullying aspects in here. It's just the definition of discriminatory acts that we, we state all. And adding, you know, so, and that doesn't include bullying either, really.
Okay.
And that mirrors every P H R, or every local H R C ordinance, yeah, that we want. But, but, but what you added was mediator, correct?
Yeah, we.
Right, as a, a commission, you added one person. Right, to oversee any problems that.
To act, to act as a commission and to resolve issues in a local level.
At a local level.
But that does involve mediation, does involve some investigation, because.
At, at no cost to the township residents whatsoever, correct?
Well, we don't know that until we.
Well, unless it goes to court, then they have to hire counsel, then they have to file paperwork, which then will be cost to the township residents. But if it's, if it's resolved through a mediator, then there's no cost to the township residents.
To resolve the local level in whatever fashion.
Right, whatever fashion, right. Okay.
Well, just to comment on that, if someone, let's say we have a mediator in place and someone has a complaint filed, like a business, they're probably gonna have to hire an attorney once a complaint is filed. So there's already a clause there. Would that be generally how these play out?
Yeah, because there'd be, there'd be, the complaint would be, the complaint would be sent to the person. That's the way these are set up.
Yeah, but, but that person has to respond. But this, the complaint is sent to the mediator.
The complaint gets also sent to the business or the entity.
So you gave the example of if I walked in, or someone walked into the ice cream parlor, and he didn't serve me because of the color of my skin. Okay, that's one example that was given. You would hear when John gave that example, okay? So where would that go? Well, that would go to the mediator, correct? At no cost to the residents or the business alone.
But then the resident and the business would each have to be notified.
Right, they would get notified.
So once a business, and John, you can speak as fair as I can, but in, once a business is notified of the complaint, generally, the first thing that they will do is hire or confer with legal counsel.
They, they can.
They can. Well, that's a choice.
They don't have to, but generally, that is what a business is most likely to do, correct?
It's just a misunderstanding. They may not do that.
They might. I'm just saying that there is, there is a chance of cost to residents and business.
But if they're, if they're given that choice.
Folks, let me put it down, you know, actually, here was.
Right, they're going to go to the P A H R C or.
Let me know. I, I agree. I'm just saying. To be ready to proceed. This is mediation, right, just similar to the H R C. So complaint comes in, it's time to mediate. Uh, then within thirty days of the complaint coming in, sends a complaint to the person who's charged with a discriminatory act, which is the entity that's falling. Um, then that goes to that person, and then that person that's been complained against files an answer within thirty days, or not. They ignore it. You know, nothing happens. Um, the mediator then follows up and tries to get the parties to mediate. And if that doesn't occur, it's unresolved. And the person that's filed the complaint then has the option of going to Portico Police, the H R C, um, or maybe the Attorney General, depending on what the issue is. So there's, there is a complaint mediator sending it to the, the, it's called the defendant. Uh, the defendant then has thirty days to respond, and then there's an effort of mediation, and then the next step.
Would be.
State agency.
State agency, right. But the first step is to mediate, the mediator.
If, if the.
If they both.
If the, if both parties agree to get together and do that.
At no cost to the township residents or business.
We don't know that, Chuck, because, you know, we don't know what that cost would be. I mean.
We have no budget for it, and the person is what's wrong with you.
Chuck asked, I'm causing a town to for a business, so I have a business and I get a complaint. You know, most people, most businesses are gonna go hire legal counsel and say, what do I do with it? I mean, that will happen. That'll happen. Depending on what it is. If it's not, if it's a misunderstanding, it won't happen.
But that would happen no matter who that company is.
Right. If there's, if there's a complaint and a response to it required, which is what these ordinances do. They, they set up, you know, a complainant, the defendant, the defendant. So there's a complaint, there has to be an answer. Then how it gets resolved depends on how serious it is, and then how serious.
But that's the question, John. No one can predict what both parties are going to do. So if they decide not to seek legal counsel and come in front of the mediator, it's resolved. There's no cost to the township residents. If it goes further, then that's their option that they have to hire legal counsel, to put that money out of their pocket, to get this problem resolved. But if you have a mediator in the township that can handle the situation when it's presented to them, and they realize that they're going to come in front of them in, in this township at no cost, no expense, and it could be like you said, a simple problem, and it's resolved. They go home. But if they feel they didn't get the proper representation here from the mediator in this township, then they have the right to go and obtain legal counsel, and then it's on them. But the township did its part. That's what, that's what this is about. Have the township do their part. That's all we're asking here. Do your part. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Judy Moss from Barbary Road, in Inglewood. You know, when I got up today, I thought this is really awesome. I'm gonna go with my colleagues and my neighbors and my friends of the board, and they're gonna. with my colleagues and my neighbors and my friends of the board and they're going to pass an ordinance. He's going to tell all my friends they belong here. On this day, it's called National Coming Out Day. Except in Lowermoreland, I think it's now called National Copping Out Day. These are people. We're all the same. We all live here. We're neighbors. We want each other to do well. But I stand here and I look at the board and I remember in the eighties when they were trying to make Woodhaven Road, pardon my front lawn, coming before the board. And except for the fact there's now women, you all look like the board that was there in nineteen eighties. But these people don't look like that. These are my neighbors now. We're not in the nineteen eighties. Archie Bunker's not walking through the door. We have to change with the times. We have to understand that under the skin, we are all the same. Every one of us. I have lived my life with this credo. Love has no gender. Compassion has no religion. And character has no race. Everyone belongs. No one needs to be included because they always belong. But we and our white privilege comfort that we've known most of our lives were too blind to know that. My mother used to say, when you know better, do better.
Lowermoreland, give your name and address.
Hi, I'm Reverend Chavis Sullivan. I live at two four two Lowell Walton Road. I'm also the pastor of the church at the Holy City in Wilmington, Delaware, but as I just mentioned, I'm resident of Lowermoreland and I have been for twenty years. I'm also the mother of a transgender daughter who is also being a resident of Lowermoreland her whole life. So she's a sophomore in college now. And I'm so grateful that her college is a supportive, inclusive and welcoming environment. Now she comes home for summers. And when she graduates in Libya, she'll probably move back here as well. And when she does, I want to be able to tell her that her community, her local representatives took a stand to make sure that she feels valued and protected. I want her to know that when she patronizes local businesses, when she interacts with her local government, when she decides to find housing of her own, that she won't experience discrimination. But if she does, that she doesn't just have to internalize the shame or distress of that on her own, that she can rely on her local government to have provided for her a process and an advocate so that her voice can be heard. I just, I want her to know at a deep level that she is safe here. And there's so much that you could do to communicate about her, including importantly, passing an ordinance just like this. And also, as you can see, I'm a representative of a faith tradition. And there's probably a lot of faith traditions here today and we all have different ways of looking at things. But I think we can all agree on the simple fact that God is love. And that human beings, all of them, are reflections and creations of that love. And so are inherently worthy and beloved, worthy of protection and care and concern. And of course, everyone's individual relationship with the God of their understanding is not ours to judge. But what we can do is intentionally endeavor to make sure that everybody who needs is treated with dignity and respect and fairness. And that is exactly the kind of thing that this ordinance is trying to safeguard and encourage. You know, in terms of religious tradition, protecting the rights of the vulnerable, it's deeply embedded in religious faith. And it's basically table states. The bare minimum of what our God and/or our conscience calls us to. It's what we owe each other, even and especially at the local level in and among the people that we live in and where we live our lives. So, thank you.
Any other Lowermoreland residents? Give your name and address.
Hello, my name is Jessica Dibas and I'm a resident in Lowermoreland, Ward one. My address is twenty seventy eight Waller Drive. I'm a mother of two and also a co-leader of P Flag Black County. And I urge you to pass this nondiscrimination ordinance quickly because our families need your help. I live here with my husband and two beautiful children. My oldest child, who is eight years old, their gender is non-binary. So what that means for my kiddo is that they don't identify with the gender binary of boy or girl. They just identify as the beautiful person that they are. And in place of pronouns, they use their name or they use singular. Their gender expression is fluid. They're really bright, happy and lovely kid all around. In this community, they enjoy swimming, karate, acting, learning to play cello. And our family wholeheartedly loves, supports and is extremely proud of them. As I said, I'm also one of the leaders of P Flag Black County, which is an organization dedicated to supporting, educating and advocating for LGBTQ plus people and their families. We do this through providing peer-to-peer support, educating people on the issues that are important to the community and advocating for inclusive policies and laws. Many of our members are from Montgomery County like myself. At P Flag meetings, we hear firsthand how harmful action in the community can have a direct impact on your own constituents. It's sad to say, but discrimination is still commonplace. Discrimination is widely experienced by LGBTQ plus people in their personalized workplace, the public sphere, and in their access to critical healthcare. This experience of discrimination leads to many adverse consequences for their financial, mental and physical well-being. Policy and programmatic efforts are needed to reduce these negative experiences and their health path on the LGBTQ plus community. People who are LGBTQ plus deserve to feel safe and secure no matter where they live, work, study, pray or play. So my child is at risk for being discriminated against just for the fact that they exist in their authenticity of being non-binary. I've worried so much already and still do worry about how others could perceive my child because the way they identify may be unfamiliar to some. So this ordinance would help alleviate some of my concerns because it passed, it helps send a powerful message that Lowermoreland doesn't stand for discrimination of any kind. And it's a place where a diverse community is welcome. There is no downfall to putting these basic protections in place. Thank you.
Any other comments? Please come up. Give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Doctor Susan Knox and I live in Ward three. I support the nondiscrimination ordinance and urge the commissioners to pass Lowermoreland ordinance number seven sixty-three. There is currently no protection under federal or state law for the LGBTQ plus community, yet a November twenty twenty-one report from the UCLA School of Law's Williams Institute found that seventy-five percent of Pennsylvania residents support nondiscrimination policies despite the Commonwealth's lack of statewide protective measures. This Lowermoreland ordinance establishing nondiscrimination will publicly support that overwhelming statement, sentiment. Even on the Montgomery County, Pennsylvania website, there is a call to action that states, "We ask our community members to help us to end these disparities and safeguard comprehensive and inclusive services for all by advocating for LGBTQ plus people and fighting against LGBTQ plus discrimination and bias." This ordinance establishing nondiscrimination also publicly supports that sentiment. How many of you have experienced bullying while in school? I know I did. I also watched my brother, who has physical and cognitive disabilities, be asked to play hockey during our after-school program, only to be laughed at in front of his face while participating and behind his back for his movements while participating. There were times he was also not selected to participate in an activity because of his disabilities. It is excruciating to watch a loved one experience discrimination. As this nondiscrimination ordinance will also cover schools, it will provide an avenue for individuals to not be discriminated against based on their handicap, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, sex, color and age. There has recently been bullying in Lowermoreland schools so reprehensible that it even necessitated a response from the high school principal. Data collected by the state of Pennsylvania in twenty nineteen indicated that when compared to heterosexual students, LGBTQ students in Pennsylvania were almost twice as likely to report being bullied both at school and electronically, including threats or actual injuries to weapons on school property. Specifically, middle and high school students who identified as LGBTQ reported experiences with verbal harassment at school, with seventy-one percent experiencing harassment based on their sexual orientation and fifty-six percent based on their gender expression. I understand that this ordinance may not necessarily cover bullying, but it is our duty as humans who have the power to take care of others, especially minors and people in marginalized communities. It requires that we support this ordinance. The LGBTQ plus community engagement project within Montgomery County and including partners at Laurel House, the Montgomery County Office of Public Health, Montgomery County Office of Children and Youth and Montgomery County Office of Senior Services, aims to identify ways to better engage people and build trust in the community. Suggestions from the participants who identify as LGBTQ plus includes a community center without walls to be created. And this would basically is that felt a sense of community that your well participants indicated was missing in Montgomery County. Within the LGBTQ plus community engagement project report is a recommendation or request that there be a push for services to be accountable and work on addressing the LGBTQ community more effectively. According to most participants, there were often safety concerns surrounding being out in Montgomery County. The environmental trauma within Montgomery County could possibly be improved, which could impact many aspects of these individual lives. The Lowermoreland ordinance supporting nondiscrimination will help to improve a failing of safety. At the September Board of Commissioners meeting, one of the chairpeople said that this was a quote hot button issue in today's society. I have to question how the notion of supporting every human being in our community is an issue. If you do not support this ordinance, you're making a statement to our community of your values and morals, whose lives you value and more clearly who you don't. As commissioners, you have a duty to and the responsibility of representing our entire community. The Lowermoreland ordinance supports the recommendations outlined in the LGBTQ plus community engagement project, addresses the call to action on the Montgomery County website, supports many other marginalized groups, supports inclusion in schools and costs the taxpayer nothing. I urge you to vote to pass this nondiscrimination ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments about Lowermoreland? Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Bond, twenty-one, twenty-two, Lockers and Lane. Simply, this is an opportunity to make a statement against discrimination and to make a witness to our community and the world around us that the inclusion, the affirmation, the welcome, the health, the safety, respect that all people deserve is something that we are willing to commit to. Thank you.
Lowermoreland, please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, we know I'm ready to add from thirty-six Chuckfield Lane. I came up here without any speech. I was just sitting here waiting for your decision on this, but I have to speak. Back in April of twenty twenty-two, we had an Asian child be jumped, not between the two schools. And we never found out who that person was jumped by. At that point, I was on Zoom and I asked all of you guys, because I said, you guys are the leaders of our community, that I asked you, one, to denounce racism and then, two, to ask, I asked for HRC to be enacted in Lowermoreland Township. Since that time, I haven't heard anything different. And the only thing that I hear was that Ruth Housen actually tried to put that into effect, which then was fought back and now we're down to mediation. I spoke with Denise Kurtz, you know, we had multiple conversations about why it's so important that we do something as a community to say, hey, the color of your skin doesn't matter. The, you know, I guess preference and gender and all that does not matter that you're safe here. I asked you guys to do all those things because I want to be welcomed here and I want to feel like I belong here. That's what I, that's what I was asking for in April. It's been months and it's been the same. This thing that we're asking for, nondiscrimination, that is the ordinance name, nondiscrimination. And that's the one that you don't want to pass? What does that mean? Does that mean you're welcoming discrimination? That's the ridiculous thing that I'm upset about. That I can't believe that we're going down to the weeds of like, who's going to sue who? Who's going to be responsible for blah, 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 right? All we're asking for is a mediation because we can't do an HRC. Why is it so difficult for you guys to say, you know what? I don't want racism in our community. I want to be treated equally as everybody else. Why is it so difficult? If a mediator comes in and says, okay, well, we'll listen to both sides and see what happens, what's the harm in that? What is the harm in trying to protect people in general? Your community, the people who actually voted for you. What, I just, that's why I had to come up here. It's not prepared, so there I am.
Thank you. Any other public comments from Lowermoreland? Give your name and address for the record.
Name's the ten point five Ward one. I similarly didn't prepare remarks. I usually do. But I did prepare remarks in August twenty twenty-one when I spoke to most of the members of this board in support of HRC. After a question like that, I moved. Since then, nothing has happened. If anything, the work has been watered down to now a mediator, which is great. And with all due respect, there are much more qualified than you and our county manager could ever be. But, and meat has been taken out of that ordinance and we're going to have, if it passes, the most important part of it, however, is, and you can call it virtue signaling or whatever you want, it's a message to our community that all groups are welcome in this town. And any discrimination of any form is not acceptable in this town. I don't care what the state passes, what the AG supports, that can change with any political cycle. What's most important is that we try to obviate the need for someone to go to the state or go to the federal level. That's where a mediator who has no investigative duties nor judicial powers or punitive powers, it's two people sitting down without lawyers to overcome a dis- misunderstanding, which most often it will most likely be. How is that bad? You seem to be more interested in protecting the businesses and why not the lawyers? Why not have them have the opportunity, if they so desire, to sit down with the companion to work out an understanding? How is that a bad signal?
Thank you. I will move on to Zoom. Any public comments from Lowermoreland? EJ, can you unmute them? And give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Stephen Keller. I've been a resident of Lowermoreland for twenty-one years. I live at twenty-one fifty-seven in Vernis Lane. I'm here tonight to support the township enacting the nondiscrimination ordinance. You know, we're living in a time when attacks on our freedoms are all too common. Intimidation and threats are becoming commonplace. Sadly, as we've seen in our school district, I think it's critical that government at all levels take a stand to protect the freedoms of all people. take a stand to protect the freedoms of all people. Passing this ordinance would make a strong statement that Lowermoreland is a place where freedoms are protected and all viewpoints and all people are respected and welcomed. I think a failure to enact this speaks volumes. There's been a lot of talk about the cost and the potential cost and potential liability. And as a business owner, I can respect that. But think of, on a long-term basis, what is the cost of not standing up against discrimination? One last point, I know the solicitor mentioned that seventy-three municipalities have enacted an ordinance similar to this, and that represents only three percent of the two thousand-plus municipalities in this state. I think if you look at that from a population standpoint, you'll find that it is far greater than three percent of the population of this state who have passed ordinances supporting this. So I would, as a resident of Lowermoreland, I'd like to see our communities stand up for freedom and stand up for the freedom of all people. Thank you.
Hello, can I come in?
Yep.
Hi, Linda Klein, thirty-nine eleven Pine. And I apologize for not being there in person, but I was just exposed to COVID and I'm something a little symptomatic, so let's all stay safe. It just advances my being at the end of this because I'm just pretty much going to put ditto marks on what everybody from the community has stood up to say so far. This ordinance does send a message, and I really, from starting out with Nancy Guns to him, I very much respect. It's what she said. It sends the message. And you start with that message. The message is, we're Lowermoreland. We welcome you, we respect you, and we will take care of you and keep you safe no matter who you are. That's why you want to be here. We've got great schools. We're not perfect, but we will take care of you if something happens. This is a more current time with work hard problems. You can go back thirty-five years and look at experience, but the world has changed and not all in good ways. We're looking towards more acceptance. And we have to protect those who are most vulnerable and, and everyone. So I really am supporting this. Even if we were the only municipality in the entire state or country who had this, I would still support it. And maybe others would follow suit. We can set the example that this is how to take care of your people and your community. And that's, that's pretty much all I have to say. And I really just want to say I support and respect Ruth, and I appreciate all of your consideration for this ordinance. Thank you.
Hi, I think it's my turn. My name is Tira Keel. I live at three, four, five, four Surrey Road in Huntington Valley, and I second everything that has been said in support of this ordinance. I have five amazing kids, three identify as members of the LGBTQ community in various ways. And there is nothing simpler that we can do than pass an ordinance that just says, at the local level, we are here and we protect and support people of the LGBTQ community. What if something bad might happen by doing this? Well, maybe, but highly unlikely based on what others have said. And just because somebody might be annoyed doesn't mean you don't do the right thing. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, now I'm going to allow our guests from our neighboring municipalities, anybody would like to come up and speak for a minute herself? Please just give your name and your township and your address for the record, please.
Not like it doesn't mean it was an accident. So my name is Mary Jane Odner. I live in Bernaford, my township, I think it is. And I live on twenty-six, twenty-six Alton Road. So I, I came here last time and spoke, which thank you very much. I also want to just thank you for doing this job again. I really appreciate that you're here and listening. So I got some constructive criticism from my daughter about whether I made clear points. So I'm just going to sort of go back, love our kids. So I spoke about when I lived in the South and I moved to Florida, South Carolina. And as a little six-year-old that I would ask, are you a Yankee or are you a rebel? And I didn't know what that meant. And I asked, you know, I don't know what that means. And whatever they described to me as a rebel, I'm like, no, I don't think that's me. And, and then, I'm sorry, I'm ring capping for some of you. And then, but they, but there was a kid who was a little bit older, probably eight, and figured out that Florida must have been neutral because Florida was below South Carolina, so it couldn't be a Yankee state. And so I couldn't be the one, it must be neutral. Which, by the way, I believed in, so I was helping my kids doing some little work. I'm embarrassed to say that, but it was true. Because it got me into my neighborhood and accepted. But the point that I wanted to make about bringing that up is, I know that Ruth had read some letters from teenagers that were being bullied, had a lot of people talk about that. And there's been bullying also because of being Asian, being black, being, you know, any, anything, right? Having a disability. And the point is, is that those little kids, they were little, and I don't know if y'all have little kids, but they don't learn that. I mean, they don't know, they don't act that way normally. Like, no one told me any of that stuff. And so I didn't have those definitions, but the kids that were asking that question had it. And so that evidence, it's just evidence that that is around us and that is happening. And I think it's important that we do put layers and protection. Which made, I want to make another point about layers. So when my kids, I had to learn how to deal with the snow and snow from the south. I didn't have very much. But when I learned you get the best snow boots, you know, that I could afford, I bought those for my kids. But I didn't just give them snow boots. I gave them socks. They wore socks. But I didn't just give them one pair of socks, I gave them two pairs of socks. Because I believe, Chris, you last time said it would be redundant, and that's why I'm making this point. So I'm trying to do better. She didn't come, but I did a little job. But anyway. So not only will there be a second pair of socks, I make sure it's wool. It's layers that protect my kids so they can go and play and have fun in the snow. In fact, I would put plastic bread bags on there so that their feet will stay dry. So there's nothing wrong with layers, right? I don't know if you've ever done that, and I learned that when I was backpacking, that layers really work. And so I think it's important. It's just a little layer here. And you don't want to have to go to a higher thing, and it would actually save money. And it sounds like that that's where we're going. You just need to have a mediation. I forget what the three levels were, but even, even that, if someone wasn't responding, it is on them, I think. Chuck made that point about, so even the business, if they have to, they don't want to give mediation and buy a lawyer, then that's on them, you know, because they're all saying, don't do that. Anyway, I feel like it's important. Thank you for letting me speak, because you do surround us here in Bernaford. And I'm really grateful. I'm looking around and I'm seeing this, this group of people, and it's quite beautiful to me. And so I think we all need protection, and obviously y'all know I have my kids too, and so, anyway, thank you.
Any other comments from our neighbors? Okay, Ruth, you can read your letter.
I'm not a neighbor, but I'm a resident.
Okay, we'll allow you to speak.
I almost, well, let me start this for those who don't know me. My name is Perry Givon. My street address is thirty-eight eighty-three Bunko. And I almost didn't come up here to speak tonight because I was so frustrated and so disgusted that we even have to have this conversation in here twenty-twenty-two about recognizing that in the community. And so actually, I was texting, and so thank you so much, Ray Schreiber, for your encouragement. As I was texting her, and I don't know what else I could say. I've spoken year after year, meeting after meeting, and now other issues that are important to me. And I've been completely disregarded. And your comment that you would allow me to speak as a resident here, I find to be incredibly offensive and condescending.
I meant you were out.
And so I, I'm speaking now.
You were out of order, so I'll just say. You were out of order, so I'll just say. Continue, please.
We all know that you were out of order.
Continue.
And we all see your arrogance. And it is highly offensive. And the same arrogance that you right now are espousing to me, I want everyone in this room to know, it is not acceptable, it's not tolerable to treat human beings in that manner. I don't care if you disregard me because of the color of my skin. I don't care if there's some people in this room who you do not choose to like or to love because of their ethnicity. Those are your personal opinions that, John writes, you made your personal opinions very well known when you started by your discussion of your personal opinions. So I did decide to come up in here and speak because I wanted to make sure that everybody's really crystal clear that even though you might have personal opinions of hatred or bias, bigotry, even if you happen to be homophobic, all of that, I'll give that to you. It's America. You have that right. But as a commissioner, I just Googled the first-class township code that we're supposed to be governed under. And as I look at that, it tells, it talks about under the Code of Ethics. It mentions the adoption of standards. And it says, a code of ethics is herewith adopted to which this board, this board subscribes, and which shall read as follows. A, the public's interest should be advanced to the maximum in all matters which come before the commissioner in his or her official capacity. The public's interest, not your own bias, not your own bigoted beliefs, not your own foolishness, not your own attempts to belabor and drag this on and out until far after an election. But it is to observe the public's interests. And that's what you're here to do, and nothing more and nothing less. Thank you.
Can I just, please read your letter.
Thank you. I didn't write this. I am pleased to submit this statement in support of the proposed Lowermoreland Ordinance number seven sixty-three, non-discrimination. On reviewing the proposed ordinance and lack of action in support of the ordinance, I find it disturbing that the board commissioners have no interest in protecting every individual in this community, but having is necessary at the local level to protect our most at-risk citizens. Young members of our community, those identifying as LGBTQ+ are particularly vulnerable to discrimination in Portland. You meant all young people in the community and LGBTQ+. You should have the best interest of the community in mind and not be beholden to elements of the media or dog. You represent all the members of your respective boards, every individual residing in this township. If you are now coming to represent and protect every one of us, you should resign your position on the board. And respectfully submitted Cindy Ager.
Well, I'm going to just, so we're going to close the public comment. Now I'm going to open it up to any of the board with additional comments and were any motions, recommendations, and Mr. Howson.
It was not my intent to label anyone as racist. It was merely my passion for passing this ordinance that has projected me forward time and time again to be looking for you. I honestly believe this is the best thing for our township. This is the best thing for our state and the best thing for our country. It, it tells everyone that there weren't everything that would care about. And I understand that you have, you know, philosophical reservations. And, you know, I originally had a rabbi come too, but he felt that this was more of a philosophical difference, a racism issue. And, and I would mostly agree. I don't consider you those races. But I do think that you're all a little misguided by the feeling the need to answer to certain media biases such as, you know, duplicate legislation. I, I don't consider duplicate, but I know some of you do because you can action at other levels. That doesn't mean that there's a law at the other levels. There isn't. This is the only place that there will be a law. Yes, they have methods of action at higher levels. But how does that help us here? If we want to keep it at home, if we want to keep it small, if we want to keep it simple. I mean, you know, what's that expression, K-I-S-S? Keep it simple, my friends, sorry. I just am hoping that you heard everybody who spoke tonight. You heard all of the arguments that were made. And that, you know, some of the tropes that have been repeated to me are discarded in favor of what I consider to be the will of the people. I think you'd be very hard pressed to find a majority in Lowermoreland that would be against this. It's such a simple ordinance. It's so minor. It really will not affect your day-to-day, your day thing, or anybody else's. But it still makes a powerful statement.
Any other comments from commissioners? Any commissioner want to make a motion or?
I'd like to make a motion that we re-advertise this ordinance and vote on it next month.
Second. Okay, any, any additional comments from the commissioners with the motion?
I do, I want to, just, we're out of comment to everybody who's on this court for a pretty long time. I want to let everyone know that if you accept one, and we want them to feel safe in the LGBTQ+.
Then you'll definitely be, yes, absolutely.
I said I, but Dr. Sartre said I need to re-advertise.
Any other comments for the commissioners? Commissioners, before I call for a vote, any other comments?
So the question running out of the public commissioners is that there's no way to adapt this, it has to be re-advertised. Is that right on that? So we need to re-advertise. Because it was tabled last month, we need to re-authorize the advertising. Exactly, and that's what we're trying to clarify right now. Okay, I'm just trying to, you want to, back to flag. So listen. So with that being said, you need to re-authorize it to be able to vote on it next week.
Re-advertise.
Re-advertise, re-authorize the advertising of it to allow us to vote on it.
Not yet, that's the motion there, Ruth.
And that was already set, so that's what's on the board.
Any other questions from the commissioners? It has been motion and second to re-advertise the ordinance as stated. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let the record show that Commissioner Hayes voted no for the re-advertising. Thank you. Commissioner Oder, I turn it back over to you to complete your agenda items.
All right, the next item is review zoning hearing board.
Do you want to give a second or?
You may take a couple of problems. Yeah, we can do that. You guys don't want to stay in the zone anymore? It's very exciting.
It's very exciting. Are you saying?
Yeah, it's a little while.
Even though we're ordered, you don't have to stay.
Well, thank you.
You're the first person to do it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, continue, Commissioner.
Okay. And now zoning hearing board appointment. The term of zoning hearing board member Derek Ray is set to expire January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Seth will review this position and inquire whether Mr. Ray is interested in continuing his capacity. With consideration of the board's input and whether he would like to be reappointed, a resolution could then be prepared for the board's December twenty-twenty-two meeting prior to the appointment's expiration. Additionally, we learned that zoning hearing board alternate Jennifer Handler recently moved out of Lowermoreland. This creates a vacancy in one of the two alternate positions. Next item, review zoning hearing board agenda and decisions. The zoning hearing board has one application for their October twentieth meeting. Application number twenty-two dash twenty sixteen, sorry, twenty-two dash sixteen, the application of Edward Song and Kathy Lowe of thirty-eight eighty-four Jeffrey Road, who seek a variance to exceed the maximum square footage of an in-law suite from seven hundred square feet to nine hundred seven point seven square feet. Additionally, the zoning hearing board made one decision at their September meeting. Application number twenty-two dash fifteen. The application of thirty-one oh three Philmont Holdings LLC. We saw special exceptions to permit a medical device manufacturing use. In this all, in the alternative, they also applied for a use variance. The zoning hearing board granted these special exceptions, which allowed the use variance to be denied. Arch Medical, who will lease space from thirty-one oh three Philmont Holdings, currently occupies a portion of three zero six three Philmont Avenue, and will expand their business into the neighboring thirty-one oh three Philmonts. And then finally, my liaison report. I represent the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust. And they have a broad range of pikes and educational sessions. Last weekend, they had their full moon hairride, which was fantastic. A ton of kids were there. There is a creek cleanup coming in March twenty twenty-three, and a five-k trail run on Earth Day, which is April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And I will say it again, if people want to help preserve open space, they are probably our best resource, and is a small fee to join, become a member there. But your membership and participation goes along by, so I encourage everyone to participate in the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust. That's all I have.
Thanks to Commissioner Onder, the chair and I recognize Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee. White on K, I'm sorry, White on M, we do consider sign printer bid award. At the July meeting, the board commissioner authorized advertising a bid for the sign printer included in the twenty-twenty-two Public Works capital budget, since it was not available through a cost-armed approved vendor. Two bids received, one from Grimco in the amount of thirty thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars fifty cents. And bid number two was IT Supplies, thirty-one thousand five hundred forty. So any questions on the board for the bids? And questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Grimco Inc. in the amount of thirty thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty cents.
So, so motion and second to approve the bid, as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I have them. Thank you.
White on P, Public Works, Steve.
Thank you. Commissioner Page, uh, during this month, this time of year, I pretty much spent a lot of most of my time working on my budget with the EGA, Chris, and I'm beating. One of my highlights is presenting my budget, using one of the best.
Yeah, what are you talking about, Chris?
One of the other things we've been doing is that we've been working with this school engineer, with the, the new school, we were helping them in our life. We did a lot of TV, you know, for them to find some of the, the storms that were lines in Redline Road that have been undocumented. They're state parks, but trying to help explore as much as we can. Um, we had our, our annual visit from our risk management, being government. We're not immune to OSHA, but we don't have OSHA checks like a normal construction, like I would, I would say. So when he comes out, it's always a good idea. He sees a lot of things that, you know, we're, what we might be doing wrong, what we should be doing right, and it's always a good lesson for all of us. I met with Mr. Perps and Mike Shep from HBA about the dugouts and Lowermore Park. I think they finalized, they found something that they can fit into their budget. So I'll probably be back in December with an improved fence and dugout beds that you guys had authorized us to do.
Good.
So I'll work on that. Redline Gym's extremely busy. I've been on HBA that they have eight hundred kids in basketball this year, I heard. So I'm here, that's great. So they all come. Not a kid, but.
Look, some of now, the numbers are coming in. A lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was awesome staying all in that part of the city.
Or Cricket Field, he's just about done for the year. I know that he had sent something up that the president related to the end. Um, that worked out. As far as in the sewers, between you guys authorized us to, um, do a study of the Philmont Avenue, our main line, which feeds into Bethears, which is our, our biggest pump station takes seventy-five gallons. On, on that cleaning investigation, we did find so far one major leak that's about thirty gallons a minute. So why not tally too much, but that's about one million gallons a month. So that's a major leak that should be looking to, to make that repair. So that's about one day's work going through that leak.
So will that add a million gallons to our total programming?
Yeah, so once we make that repair, we'll be able to reduce, should be by then, then a gallon a month.
Yeah.
So now that's one spot.
And right now Steve and the sewer guys, they rotate through, they're just putting their fingers.
But I hope to, at, at some point, they're gonna show you the quick snippet in the video. Want to, free to do one now, but it, it's kind of neat to see the video go through of a, of a pipe clean, it could go such a pipe that's twenty-four inches. Clean it and then get the respond. There's this, you know, gassy, like a water spigot on one side. You know, it's clean water, and that's, that's money that's costing us down in the city, so. That's the kind of stuff, our agreement with Philadelphia is we're supposed to be looking for it, so we found some and started to make them prepare. And Chris has had that all prepared, manically, so that we'll be ready to make them.
Nice.
Thank you.
Is that a phone or is that a reading board? That's, I believe, Bob's.
Right now, too.
I didn't know there's somebody starting to attack in here. Next item is Q, review certificate of appropriateness. I'm gonna lump that with item R, my liaison position, because we fall under that for the R. Twenty-two dash oh six, the application of Daniel Morrison, twenty-four ten Huntington, Huntington, the EGA. It's the Huntington A Presbyterian Church would like to alter the existing barn located on Turner property. The operation includes changing the garage, there were new windows. The board recommends the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness. Any questions on the board? Any questions from the public?
Will I get a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve appropriateness.
I second.
Twenty-two dash, twenty-two dash.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for application twenty-two dash oh six to approve the certificate of appropriateness.
So. Just a motion and second to approve the certificate of appropriateness, and describe all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said, thank you. Do you got it? Did you say you're done? Throw it back to me, this is where I'm starting up. Thank you, Commissioner Pace. The chair and I recognize Commissioner Allen, Chair of the Public Property Committee.
The Lowermoreland Township Authority actually had a, um, a meeting on October fifth, they have one quarter. So I actually have a little to report, but, you know, other people have reported those things as well. Um, the capital projects include the major infiltration at the Bethears pump station. The other relining projects that are underway, most of which are being done by subcontractors. And the three pneumatic stations, Longview, Howell, and Hilton Road in Benath, actually, um, are ongoing. Um, we had two exceedances, which means we exceeded the allowed amount into Philadelphia um, from our flow, uh, this year, this, um, period. Well, on April seventh, if you'll remember, well, actually, I looked it up. But April fifth, sixth, and seventh, it rained constantly. We had, um, several inches on one of those days as well, so it was really deluged. Um, the exceedance at Bethears were allowed two point four. You know, it's like, you know, gallons, um, whatever. And we went to two point six. But they're not charging us for that because of other factors. The Philmont Station, we had, uh, one point four, we were allowed one point four, and we actually had one point six to one. That resulted in an eight thousand dollar charge, a little over eight thousand dollars, which, uh, since our township manager, who are well providing, um, us with cushions, uh, we are still way under budget from here. Um, the relining project that, uh, Steve Warner has just, the Director of Public Works has just outlined, uh, will help to manage that problem. Um, and it will reduce the, uh, uh, flow through Bethears quite a bit. Um, in the future, when we, we also got approved, you brought up, right? Did you bring up?
Which topic?
The stormwater.
I did not, actually, I left that one for you.
Nice, thank you. We've been talking about for the last several months about separating the sewer bill into a sewer bill and a sort of stormwater management. Um, and what we have, or what our township manager and staff have decided on is we will pull out seventy dollars a quarter from the existing sewer bill, and that will now go to stormwater management. There will be no net increase. Um, and the reason we're able to do that is because all, or almost all of our, um, loan payments, which were quite high, are now paid off for, for this authority, for the Lowermoreland Township Authority. Um, and we'll need a stormwater management plan, process, supervisor, and program uh, because of new state and federal requirements that are making it quite impossible not to help them. The good news is our stormwater management plans will be done by some organization called Woodrow Associates. Yeah.
I heard they're good.
I heard they're good. Me too. Um, so again, there will be no total change for ninety-nine percent of the problems in Lowermoreland. There, there are fifty families, about fifty.
We're going through the list now. It's, it's definitely in that fifty-plus.
Okay. Um, there's some families who don't currently get a sewer bill because they have onsite sewage treatment. Uh, they will now get a seventy dollar quarterly bill for the stormwater maintenance space. An example of that is Stoneville. Uh, this, and I don't, I have stopped doing the flows that the previous reporter for the Lowermoreland Township Authority used to report, um, because uh, our Director of Public Works now includes in his report. Does anyone have any questions? Anybody out there have any questions? Okay. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner House.
I'll be fair, Liz. One additional item, I don't think I missed it, that there is an appointment that's coming due that you were to look.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. Sorry. I knew that, I just forgot. I had to move down, sorry. Um, the current chair, Frank Spott, Jr., uh, his appointment is set to expire in January second. Um, staff will review and check with Mr. Spott and to see if he is still interested in retaining this appointment.
Thank you, Commissioner Allison. The chair and I recognize Commissioner Canale, Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Sir. First up tonight, I have Chief Serrano.
Evening, everyone. My report from the month of September. Uh, we had three disorderly conduct cases, uh, one burglary of the business. We had eight thefts from autos that are still ongoing, so please remember to lock your vehicles. Uh, we did have two catalytic converter thefts, so despite us catching people, there's still more people coming into our community committing these types of crimes. We had, uh, seven drug arrests, seven DUI arrests last month. Um, a slew of frauds, it's kind of a, a never-ending issue. Uh, one case resulted in multiple arrests um, from a forgery case, wound up with twenty-two forgery counts against one subject. We had three warrant arrests of people from outside of our community that were arrested and turned over to other organizations. Um, we had a theft case, uh, from June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, where three males broke into our, uh, car wash on Huntington bike and entering a coin vending machine, taking eighty dollars. All three people were identified, all three people were arrested, uh, on September twelfth. In charge with theft, receiving stolen property, disorderly conduct, and littering. We also had a stalking case involving two, uh, employees of the township that were, uh, being harassed online. We tracked that person down to Delaware. Person was subsequently arrested and brought here to Lowermoreland and put in through the ballot system. Um, the forgery case I talked about was over ten thousand dollars, uh, lost to one of our residents and twenty-two counts of forgery. Um, best thing is our bus stop buddies program is back up and running. Uh, I have to thank Officer Kelly Heiss. We had to stop that over COVID period. Um, if, if you're not familiar with it, we put our police officers on buses with the kids. Uh, as they go around, get picked up in the morning, our officers greet parents, meet the kids, talk with them on their way back to the police station, uh, back to the school, not the police station. Um, and then we provide that little gift, so it's just a really positive experience, uh, both for the kids and for our officers. So we do that with all the little kids to, uh, elementary age and middle school. Uh, so we're really happy to get that back up and running. Uh, almost sixteen hundred calls the last month. Uh, twenty fire calls, which Chief Jolly will talk about, uh, forty-seven accident reports, and almost seventy medical systems faults. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the public?
Now we make it out with the beauty bandit.
The beauty bandit?
Yeah, we stopped the beauty bandit.
Uh, oh, yes, uh, that, that person, uh, was arrested.
We did catch him.
Yes, we did catch him with, uh, it was like eight hundred dollars worth of makeup from CBF. Actually. Thank you. It'll be on the next month.
I'm more, she's on your own.
Commissioner, it was a short, short report for this month. I have a lot more with the fire department. For the month of October, due to our fire prevention programs and our school programs. I did receive the new heat road turnpike access card. I ordered three of them, so I have one in the police supervisor's car, one with the fire department, and one in public parks and hot box. That's to get into the gate at the turnpike in case there's a plan extra that we need to respond there. Uh, as far as the county, they are recommending everybody get a flu shot this year. A new communications vehicle is in the works for delivery in twenty twenty-three. Also, the county, uh, we have a substation down in Upper Dull, and we found a spot on Virginia Drive. It's gonna, uh, house the, uh, USAR and Hazmat, uh, specialty team, the equipment and response vehicles. We're getting a lot more calls in the eastern end of the county than the western end, so they want to put, uh, two response, the two teams that have response vehicles out of Upper Dull, so hopefully that'll be, uh, a bonus for us down this way here. The county health department has been down inspecting all the kitchen hood systems and all of the, um, nursing homes and restaurants, and he's been on the phone with me and sending me emails of some of the minor violations that he's found, so I. minor violations that he's found. So I'm out inspecting them as well, and then I'm re-inspecting them to make sure they are clean and properly serviced. Anything, any questions for me?
I think from the board, from the public. It takes me to my liaison. First up is H B A. I know the travel festival. Teams have been prepared to be getting started, practices and so on. In-house is becoming on next. H B A day is this Saturday, fifteenth of April. That's all I have on that. Steve already covered dugouts, which is being proposed. Takes me to my second liaison report, which is for the developed library, attending their board meetings. They had the busiest month ever last month since their inception. Not going back just to COVID ever, which is great. Staffing is getting back on track and it is a great resource to the community over there. Pam's awesome, same. I highly recommend you stop and check it out sometime. This knee sore cupboard, I believe the fifteenth, they're doing the movie on backyard.
Yeah.
On the back half of the building, field. Hey, guys, check it out. And that's all I have. Turning back to you, Doc.
Thank you, Commissioner Canali. That completes our advertised stated agenda items for public comment. Is there any public participation for non-agenda items? Mr. Date, come on.
This is an actually, this is for Mark that George, he couldn't make it tonight.
We're citing them. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. Okay. But yeah, very good. But he asked me to turn his attention to the board of the West development down there. There was two violations. One was a Sunday, they were working before, actually six twenty, they wanted to say. They were actually moving heavy equipment, moving dirt, and then one was Saturday prior to the starting time. That's also, which event, six forty, they started working that day.
So we, we have the police before.
We have.
We were on this past Saturday.
Right.
I don't believe we saw a report for something.
Sunday was ten two. He called the police. He didn't get a call back. I don't think he requested one, but on ten eight, he did request a call back from the police because.
So the ten eight is the one that was sent into the district.
Right, and there's another one that was also.
I'll follow with the chairman of the morning this afternoon.
Yes. Right, so. Mr. Everyone wants to know what type of vine we're looking at here.
That will be up to the district judge to determine. So he will file a complaint.
Something to judge. So I can take that backwards on that, something to judge.
Correct.
Out of our end. Okay, thank you very much.
Let Mr. McGee to follow from what the manager said that since that point in time, we spoke, everything forward is a warning. Everything is going right.
Who's actually in charge on the township of the actual condition of that property? I mean, if you go by it, the grass is four foot high, the fence line is always down. Sometimes the gate's left open all weekend, so anybody can go in there. We have, we have seen people walking around this site at night time with flashlights. I said to Mark, George, you need to call the police. And he said, well, by the time he goes back to look, they're gone again. So this site is left unlocked. It's not kept up. There's trash all over the place. And, you know, one commissioner said at the very beginning of this project, it looks like a blank, well, that looks like blank. If you go by and look at that.
You know, I, I've been on that site and I, we've been talking that regularly back in the clean up. He's promising that any day now, the fence comes down, the grassy leaves in. I'll, I'll, I'll mark it back.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other public participation for non-agenda items? Anything on Zoom? Okay, before I make the motion for adjournment, I would acknowledge that we have a solicitor meeting twice a year to talk about litigation against the township for various things, and I believe tonight is that night? Yes, it is. So we will be meeting an executive session with our solicitors and special litigation managers, which we do twice a year. And then I'd like to make the motion for adjournment. Second, the motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.